All right. So, good evening. This is the March nine meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission town of Groton. The chair tonight is Jeff Pritchard and the staff from Office of Planning and Development Services are Bruce Lofgren, Diane Glenbosky, and me. If there are members of the public who want to address the commission, you can do that under Public Communications. In order to do that, you do have to raise your virtual hand. So on, on Apple, you can find it at the top of your screen. On a, on a PC, it's at the bottom. If you're on the phone, it's star nine.
Are you ready? Recording and everything? Okay, call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is roll call. Here's, we have everyone here except for Steve Wood of Chuck. Is that? Have regular members. The first item of business is consideration of public hearings. On S U B twenty dash oh two fifty-five Star Street. Subdivision continuation. And before we get started on our discussion. Our town attorney reviewed what happened during our last meeting where there was a presentation. Made by one of our members over the zoning, over a marked up zoning map. That was not included during the public hearing. So we felt to, to be, to say, be safe. On further discussion and taking action on this item. Everybody who's a voting member should agree to the statement that they will not take. This, the zoning map that was shown at. At our discussion in the consideration. For reaching a decision. On this subdivision application. And it would only be, they should only be basing their decision. On the information provided during the public hearing sessions. I like to go down our voting members and everybody who agree that they will not. Be using this presentation of the map to make a decision. On the subdivision. Michael Kane, do you agree?
Yeah, I agree. I will not be making, using the map that was presented. For making my decision.
How's that? Do you agree?
I agree. I will not be relying on the map or any information contained in it for my decision.
Barbara Tarbox, do you agree?
I agree. I will not consider it despite the fact that I had to hit Hal with my wrist.
So, Southernland, do you agree?
I agree, and I will not use it for my consideration.
Okay, and I agree with that. I will not be using the map. Or making a decision. So I'd like to open it up. Go around to the commissioners to see what their. Thoughts are on the. On the action we should be taking on this subdivision application. And any comments they have on. The motion that was provided by staff. As a model motion. I'll start with you, Mike.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I made many of the comments that I'm gonna make again, but I would just, I, I read the motion. The only, the issue for me at this point is the open space. I see the subdivision as a math problem. It's, you know, point nine seven acres, R S twelve. You do the math, draw the lines. I don't have a prob, problem. I, I know that, that the regulations allow that to fit. Four point nine of our regulations is the one, one of the few regulations that is directed toward us, demands us what to do, not the development. And it tells us that we must take open space and that we may take a fee in lieu of, but it would seem to me that if we were to do what. Not do what our regulations demand of us, then we should have a reason. And so that's where I get stuck, is that I, I don't know what the reason is because what I saw were seven people at our last meetings who all saw. Where that open space was gonna be and all seven of them asked for it. And then. I, I wanna make sure from staff before I say this, but may I reference or read from the two thousand and nine? The open space plan of, that Mr. Barry referenced in our meetings. That's something I, I just wanna read, read a couple of sentences from it.
From the, from his letter, you mean?
Well, in his letter, he referenced the two thousand and nine open space. Document, Recreation and Master Open, Open Space Plan, The Level of Service. What he said in there.
I, I wouldn't add any additional information other than what he cited in his letter. Like, I, I would not read from any other sections in that document.
Just the letter.
Okay, well, let me just make sure. I don't, yeah, no, I'm, that's why I want to be careful for the circumstances. So in his letter here, which I have, he said the two thousand and nine Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan. The level of service for outdoor facilities in the area around Starship was identified between. Adequate and excellent. And what I was just hoping to do was to read from the executive summary of that plan, which is entitled The Level of Service.
I, I think.
I, I, yeah, I, I wouldn't.
I don't think we should be doing that.
I would, I wouldn't just.
Okay, all right. All right, then those are all my comments.
Okay. Hal. You have any? Comments on the. On the action we should be taking or any comments on the proposed motion?
Uh, I don't believe so. I, I, I'm in favor of the. Payment in lieu of open space. I think in this case. The action would, our alternative is to take a piece of open space. Where I don't think any additional open spaces is needed. And I think that's the point of having that option. Yes, all the neighbors would like it as a, as an additional buffer to one of the lots. But frankly, if the houses are more spread out, I think that would be a more effective buffer. So I don't think that actually helps that much rather than crowding it in the way it was shown there. Or any other way, we just crowd in the houses that much more. I think adding that much money into our pot to purchase additional open space. Not in, not one open space, but just to add to the pot that we have to address other open space needs is a better idea. Where that is, 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 is so close to. Other open space and/or the river that I just don't see any need. Or desire for having a pocket park or even a, a bench at that location just doesn't, didn't make any sense to me. I guess that we're also going to address whether or not the sidewalk should be here, and I definitely think. The sidewalk should be there, even though right now it's only the center third of the block, but that's how we do sidewalks. We don't get to do them all at one time. We do a piece at a time. And in this case, into say fairly long stretch. That much more good reason to have a sidewalk so you can get out of the way of cars in the middle of the block. On either side, the, the right of way is adequate enough. So at some point in the future sidewalks could be added on by the town if they wanted to. And that's all I have.
Okay, Barbara.
Yes, I think I will be echoing what Hal had said. I agree that we should be taking the fee instead of the open space. I initially was in favor of the open space. But I realized that. As crowded as that lot is going to be. Taking away even more land for open space will, would just exacerbate that problem. And I, I don't really think it's necessary to have open space in that location. I am in favor of having sidewalks there. And I am still opposed to having three driveways in addition to that right of way that exists. I think that's just too many. Driveways in a very. Short. Piece of, of the street. I, I think it's bad. For traffic. It certainly chops up any sidewalk that would be there. You know, I, I, I don't, I don't see how we can, cannot approve this. But it's, it's certainly not what I think most of us would like there. That's all.
Susan.
Yes, thanks. I think with the sidewalk, I, I hear the safety issue, so I would agree with that for those reasons. For the open space, as I mentioned before, I did go up there and spent some time trying to visualize it. And I appreciate the drawings that were given to us also. That was very helpful. But I, I'm not in favor of creating an open space there. I don't think it makes any sense at all. But I am in favor of the payment move. But those are all my comments.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I thought about the sidewalk and. I don't know that it's really necessary, but. I guess it doesn't hurt to have it. There does provide at least some formal way to get off the street if, if there are cars coming down. The open space. Is proposed, I think it would just, unless you have some way to market or put a fence up. There'd be no way that the property, adjacent property owner would even know it's town open space and you'd eventually take it over. So there's no sense in, in creating an open space. Area in the lieu of, payment in lieu of, I think makes more sense. If no one else has any. Other issues and. I will start through with the motions that have been provided. First one, make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one more comment?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I just wish that in the future, if we're gonna rely on information from the Director of Parks and Rec, that he could get it to us in a more timely manner so that. We would have time to research it and discuss it. And I would, on another note entirely, not with this, is that I think that, that I, I kinda wish that we had fee in lieu of sidewalks. As well, because maybe that would be something that would be beneficial when you're making a decision like this, but maybe that's something that we should maybe think about in the future. That's all. Thank you.
You know, I think though the fee of, wasn't there a state statute change that allowed us to do that? There was something that came about because originally on planning on subdivisions. We would just rely on what the town. Town Rec Department would say whether they wanted open space or not. And eventually we were able to get a fee in lieu of for these small subdivisions, which really don't have. Enough open space to really be usable.
That's right. There was a change in the statute that allowed the fee in lieu of maybe two thousand and three, two thousand and four.
Yeah.
Just, it seems to me in the sense of fairness to everyone. As we treat open space, you know, where we're able to request these things or not, that would be something that would probably be seen as more fair to everyone. Just a thought.
Okay.
I think you probably have to have some kind of plan. And so Deb and I were talking about it last week or so. And if you're interested in that, I guess we could look further into it to see how other towns are doing it. Um, because some, at some point it could be appropriate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion for. This sub twenty dash oh two fifty-five Star Street subdivision to deny a request for a waiver of section four point seven. Parent one of the subdivision regulations to eliminate the requirement of a sidewalk along the subdivision lot frontage on Star Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will wait, vote on the motion to deny a request for a waiver of the sidewalk. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. I'll make a motion for subdivision twenty dash oh two fifty-five Star Street subdivision. To approve the fifty-five Star Street subdivision, fifty-five Star Street with the following. Modifications. One, in accordance with section four point nine parent five, a pay. Payment in lieu of open space of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, the equivalent of ten percent of the fair market value of the land. Prior to the subdivision shall be made prior to recording the plans. Two, that the existing trees shown on the plan to remain. Are preserved if any of the existing street trees that are shown. To remain are removed. They shall be replaced with an approved street tree. Three, that a four foot wide batuminous sidewalk shall be constructed as depicted on applicant's exhibit one. The exhibit shall be revised to relocate the existing portion of the stone wall to the south of the proposed sidewalk along the frontage of Lot One. The relocated portion of the existing stone wall along the frontage of Lot One shall be preserved for the revised exhibit. The exhibit shall also be revised to incorporate any comments from the Department of Public Works. These revisions shall be reflected on the final subdivision plans prior to recording. Four, that all necessary final and sign easements are provided to staff prior to recording of the final plans. Five, all technical items is raised by. Staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That would be me.
Any abstentions? Motion is carried for in favor. One opposed. I'll make a motion for sub twenty dash oh two fifty-five Star Street subdivision. To approve the coastal site plan for the fifty-five Star Street subdivision as it is consistent with all applicable. Coastal policies includes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts on coastal, coastal resources. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none will vote on them, on the cam. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. The first meeting is January twenty-sixth. Twenty twenty-one. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty. Six.
I would second that.
Second.
That would be me.
Does anyone have any corrections? If no one has any corrections, then we'll vote on approval of the minutes of January twenty-sixth. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February second, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Does anyone have any corrections? I had one on page three. Toward the bottom of the page, under item twenty-five. The second. Sentence in there says the commission concurred to go hearing with fuel dispensing. I think it should have a two after that. So it concurred to go to hearing with fuel dispensing removed from the W R P D. Just a typo. Does anyone have anything?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also noticed that, and I was wondering how it read. Seems strange, but I couldn't figure it out. Thank you.
I think that's how it's supposed to. I think what they meant that we.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought it was supposed to read, but.
I think adding the two.
I, I read it a few times. I was trying to get the.
I sort of wondered what it's. So check and see if people read it. Okay, we'll vote on approval of the minutes of February second is corrected. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next, we have Public Communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications to identify? Does staff have any? Communications?
I'll just note that you have received a number of emails and letters through the town manager's office regarding Mystic River Bluffs. We've also received several through our department, including a couple today. I think that's most of your correspondence over the last two weeks.
Okay.
I guess I'd, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to add that one of the letters that I received. The person writing it was referring to a, a meeting with Russler. So I did ask John Reiner about that. If there was a recording or anything. And apparently the meeting videos are on the Russler webpage. So I asked John if he would have someone forward the link to that. Just so the rest of the commission knows. It's, I wasn't aware there was something like that, quite honestly.
Yeah, they've been having meetings with whoever wants to meet with them on their own, and I think they are recording them. They're Zoom meetings.
Right, because I think the challenge with that is things are said, this is according to someone repeating what was said at the meeting, so. And if so, it might have been a significant statement. And so obviously then it'd be great to listen ourselves and. Get our own impression of what was said.
Okay. All right, Deb, is there anyone on the public that?
Um, all right, so. So just as a reminder, if you want to, commission, you need to raise your virtual hand and we'll call on you and let you speak. So yes, we do have a couple of folks who do want to speak with the commission.
You wanna call them?
First one is Hal Robb.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Hal Robb. I'm at Seven Hancock Drive in Mystic. And, and I would like to speak about the Mystic Oral School property zoning regs. I guess I'd like to start with a little bit of a preface that my watching your commission over the last couple of months and fifty-five Star Street and all of the twists and turns of that story. Kind of reinforced for me that it's what's written down that really counts. I, I participated in the meeting, well, I, I watched the meeting a, a month or so ago when neighbors had raised concerns about shoehorning three houses. In that fifty-five Star Street property. And at the end of the present, the end of the time, the lawyer for the people who want to put the three houses in basically said it's what's written down that counts. That I understand what you're saying, neighbors, but the zoning allows those three houses and we're gonna go ahead with it. So with that, with that in mind, I'm, I'm opposed to the size of the proposed development up at the Mystic Oral School. And I guess following up on the idea that it's what's written down that counts. If you look at the development agreement that the town signed with the Restler, there's two places. Section five point zero one bracket C and fifteen point zero one. That allow the, or that expect that the Planning and Zoning Commission and other agencies in the town will make their decisions not based on what's in, or not necessarily based on what's in the development agreement. So my sense of that is that you don't have to rubber stamp anything that Restler wants to do. You get to decide for yourselves what that property ought to be zoned for. And as you all know, it's an RU eighty zone at the moment. And I, and I just wanna make sure you understand is I'm not against developing the property. I've walked my dog up there for years. And the, the buildings are dilapidated. They, they need love and attention, and I would love to see that a thriving place, but not to the tune of a thousand units and, and all that stuff. But again, I want to reemphasize that the development agreement allows you to do what you think is right. That's my layman's interpretation of it. And so as a, as sort of an adjunct to what was brought up a minute ago about Restler having their own little side meetings. They're not very good at letting everybody in the area know that they're gonna have that meeting. It's almost word of mouth that trickles around. And in, and in one of those meetings, again, I'm getting this secondhand, but I'm gonna give it out anyways. That there, well, in fact, I'm jumping ahead. Let me come back to that in a minute. What I have heard though, again, secondhand, is that there's nothing, nothing cast in stone about all of the papers that have been signed. That there's no guarantee that Restler is gonna be the one, that everything is still, I'm gonna call it up in the air. And so if it's, if it's truly up in the air and, and if you don't have to rubber stamp the, the Restler product, if you will, or the proposal. I would suggest, or I would recommend that you take all of the Restler provided materials and the details that are currently in the proposed zoning requirements for that, for the Connecticut property, for the. For the Mystic Oral School out of the proposed zoning regulations. Again, I'm very, very sensitive after fifty-five Star Street. It's what's written in the zoning regs is what's gonna get enforced. Get Restler's sizes, their drawings, all of that stuff out of those zoning regulations. The second thing I'd like to recommend is get everything out of the proposed zoning regulations that implies that you're gonna change the current zoning regulations for adjacent properties. If somebody wants to fix the zoning so that they can do something different that the current surrounding properties are zoned for. Let them come to you or whatever the process is for changing the zoning, asking your variance or doing whatever it is you have to do. Above board and, and do it properly rather than slide it in as part of this zoning change for what's supposed to be just the Mystic Oral School. Don't, don't contaminate what you want to do with the oral school with what somebody else would like to do for adjacent property. And I think we all know we're talking about the Ferguleski property, but I don't know where else that might go. And Ferguleski property, I think, is zoned RU twenty. And so don't turn that into a mega development kind of a thing. Because Restler wants to do that. Focus the zoning regulations on the Connecticut property. That's all that, I think that's all that it should be done. And again, I guess I'm gonna come back to the thing that I started to say a minute ago. Restler in their presentations has said that they're, they're gonna do it in phases, this development, and that makes sense, I think, from a business point of view. But the first phase is gonna be about two hundred units. That, that's my understanding. But it's not gonna include any extra roads, and it's not gonna include any, any remediation or refurbishment of the existing buildings on the site. And then if they don't do, if they don't have much good luck about filling those units, they may not go any farther. Or they, they have to go get more money to go farther. And if all that falls apart, then they may, and this is my personal opinion, maybe they walk away from the product or, or project. And now, and if you don't take all of the Restler stuff out of the zoning regulations that you're gonna apply to the state property, then some, who. Somebody else might wanna come in later on and they're gonna go, do I have to do what Restler had planned to do originally? So I guess, again, at the end of the day, my feeling is you have the ability to make your own decisions. Maybe some people might have stars in their eyes or dollar signs in their eyes that they could put this big mega development up there and they could get a lot of tax revenue. But the truth of the matter is, is that place is never gonna be able to handle the kind of size that people would love to see there. You don't have to follow those. You don't have to follow those rules. It's up to you based on what I've read in the development agreement. I would, I would ask you respectfully to please make up your own minds. And, and don't let, don't let this get steamrolled over you and say, "No, no, no, we already signed this. We already signed this. It's a done deal." Other, they're already saying it's not a done deal. Well, okay, then, then get all of that stuff out of there and pare it right down to what you'd expect to see a regular zoning requirement to read like. Thanks. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Let's see. Next is Becca Welt.
Does she have to unmute herself?
Becca Welt, you can, you can speak to the commission if you like.
I'm sorry, I had double muted myself. Can you hear me now? Okay, this is Becca Welt, thirty-two Boulder Court. I've been watching these meetings for months now and learning so much from all of you. I wanted to thank you for all your hard work and ask you to please keep in mind the many concerns of the neighbors as you work on the zoning changes for the Mystic Oral School. I would also agree with Ms. Sutherland's suggestions that you watch as many of the meetings that Mr. Restler has held as you can to get a clear picture of what that company plans and see if Mr. Restler's vision for the Mystic Oral School matches your vision of what is right for Mystic and for Groton. Thank you.
Let's see, R Katow.
Well, that's Roseanne.
Roseanne Katowski, yeah.
Hi, everyone. Roseanne Katowski, twenty-four Ann Avenue, RTM District Five. Good evening. I have some questions tonight for the Planning and Zoning Commission. But first, I want to thank Deb Jones for sending the Planning and Zoning Commission the FOI request from Attorney McCauser, as well as the town response. Here are some questions for the commission to consider. Why are there no documents provided in the town FOI response? The town, the town responses state, quote, "There are no responsive documents," quote. How could that be when these specific documents were supposed to be supplied by the developer by certain deadlines? Is it because the developer has not met any deadlines in the agreement with the town? Should the Planning and Zoning Commission be aware of this? Is the Planning and Zoning Commission being rushed to action regarding the Mystic Oral School property, although no deadlines have been met in the developer agreement? To what extent does the development agreement between the town and the developer have the potential to influence the Planning and Zoning Commission echoing Hal's recent comments as well? Please bear in mind that there are four signed agreements that intentionally circumvented the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was stated by Reiner last Tuesday at the Town Council meeting that, quote, "This project, meaning the Mystic Oral School project, cannot move forward without TIF money. Before any decisions are made on this property, should Groton residents be made aware what taxpayer burden will be for this project? Should the Planning and Zoning Commission be aware of what TIF deals were made? Another concern I want to bring to your attention is regarding a document included in the February four, twenty-twenty-one Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda Packet labeled Mystic Education Center Development Issues. The document was produced by a Groton taxpayer-funded consultant, Horstley Witten, who has been hired as the consultant to the Planning and Zoning Commission to write the new regulations for the Mystic Oral School property. Am I understanding that correctly? Now, this is what I just cannot wrap my brain around. Why are the Restler comments, suggestions, and questions throughout the document, specifically in the use table and building height sections? Also, are all the grade sections from Restler input? Why are Groton taxpayers paying for a consultant to work with and for the developer? I understand that Restler is the preferred developer. But is this cozy relationship between the consultant, Horstley Witten, and the developer, Restler, appropriate? Who exactly is Horstley Witten, Witten working for? Also, the commission might want to carefully review the density increase section in the document. Please note the vagueness of the statement, quote, "This concept was discussed with the Planning and Zoning Commission in March," probably meaning last March, and met with, quote, "general approval." What does general approval mean? Did this actually happen? It would seem that any planning and zoning commission decision would be more formal than, quote, "general approval," as stated in the document. While, of course, I do not understand the complexity, complexities of the regulations, proposed changes, as well as staff, developer, and consultant interactions, something does not seem right here. Last question. Should the Planning and Zoning Commission be concerned that something does not seem right here? Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Right, thank you. Let's see, next up, looks like Rayleigh Anne Westervelt.
I apologize. I'm, I'm not sure why Rayleigh Anne's address came up instead of mine. This is Scott Westervelt at Seven Boulder Court in here in Mystic. Rayleigh is my daughter, so I guess I was using her computer last time. Okay, so I agree with everything pretty much that Roseanne has said and also what Hal Robb has said. We've been talking about this for quite some time now. I just want the commission to be aware that I'm not opposed to development in a reasonable fashion up in that area. There are problems with what has been brought out, and I think there's more of a problem with the process and how that's been done. Right off the bat, the Pratt Building seems to be the, the, the Pratt Building seems to be what the Town Council wants. And I don't understand if twenty years ago, we basically turned down the option to use the Pratt Building because at that time, it was structurally unsound. I can't imagine that after twenty years, it's gotten any better. I live at the bottom of the hill. I see it frequently. It's, it can't be in any better shape. And that worries me that the Town Council is, is so entrenched on that part of the property. And one of the things that I'd like to ask is, you know, we're talking a lot about what Restler wants and what Restler is proposing. But the question I have for the Planning and Zoning Committee is, have they given you anything? Have they given you any documents for what they're looking for approval for? Because if the Planning and Zoning Committee is supposed to do this so that they follow those rules, what, what has Restler given? Because I keep being told that we're, you know, not at that point yet. We haven't gotten to some of the site plans. We haven't gotten all of that. So I guess my question is, what has been given to the Planning and Zoning Committee to act on? Or has this truly gone the, the backdoor way so that it's coming from the Town Council? And the Town Council is going to tell the Planning and Zoning Committee what they expect. That, to me, just doesn't seem, that doesn't seem fair. And I would like to also bring up, based on one of the Town Councilor's comments the other night on the committee of the whole meeting. She said, "Meetings were held, a public hearing was held, and there were RTM people at that meeting. Yet, no one that I can talk to, no one that I can find, has any idea about any of that." And that just seems, I mean, that's a pretty strong statement, saying that you've had hearings and that you've had meetings on this, yet nobody knows about it. That worries me about how those meetings were actually done. So I've got a lot of concern about the process and how it's being followed. And I have a lot of concern that Planning and Zoning Commission is being dictated to by the Town Council when, in fact, it's the Planning and Zoning Committee that should be saying what is acceptable and what is not. So I appreciate everything y'all are doing. You're doing a great job. It was very interesting and enlightening listening to the Fifty-Five Star Street. And I, I mean, I, I think you guys took a professional approach to it. A lot of unhappy people, but there's also, you know, you got to follow the rules, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Now, let's see, Mike Whitney.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. I'm Mike Whitney, one-one-two Deerfield Ridge Drive, Mystic, Connecticut. And since the last time I spoke, I had a chance to read through the developers' agreement that the, the town and Restler signed on February eleventh, two thousand twenty. And of course, I've also read the letter to the day that the Town Council authored just about a week or so ago. Both in the developers' agreement and the Town Council letter, I really feel like they're tying your hands as Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'm particularly upset that the process has gone so far, apparently, without consultation of, of your commission, either as a commission or, or having members on, in the planning process. And so that part, that planning, in the planning and zoning, seems like they're not taking full advantage of the expertise your commission has. And just in general, I think through the process, as we hear from people in the area or nearby, that the proposed project doesn't fit well with, with the rural character. I think if stakeholders have engaged earlier on, we'd be coming out here with a more palatable option to all. As, and I think where it is right now, it's unlikely to have an optimal outcome. Right now, it looks, what's proposed is just wholly inconsistent with the rural character of the area. And, and it's rural by definition. It's rural by definition of zoning. And that's something zoning is on the front lines of holding together the character of a community. And that's something that we need to keep. If I understand that this property we're talking about had pre-existing uses, and it is in need of, of some level of development. But if it's not kept rural, the current zoning, it at least should blend with the rural character that's surrounding, not just the immediate area, but the whole part of this town. And, and what's in the developers' agreement and what Restler Homes has talked about clearly doesn't. And so that's why I'm encouraged and I applaud your, your approach. Let's, let's look at this, a higher level approach. What uses do we want? What's an acceptable level of density? And design that rather than be projects specific, to design something that, that can fit in. And I know that's a hard task ahead of you, not made easier by the developer agreement or the, the letter to the day. But I, I know that you guys are, all are up to the task, and thank you for your service to the town and, and ongoing. And I just have a couple more comments, and it's just a few things I hadn't realized before. One, that if you read the developers' agreement, we talk about the lower part of the state property that's going to be deep DEP space, open space, not touched by the project. Well, it's actually not part of the project. It's separated out from that. So I think it's, well, it seems appropriate that when we're thinking of density or allocations of open space for the project, that that be within the thirty-seven or so acres, not, not the part that the state has and is not I'm going to give up. And another thing is even with that upper space, for instance, the Pratt Building, that's in coastal area management zone for the Mystic River. I didn't know that before, but looking at it, I can see why it leads rather quickly downhill into the Mystic River and already impaired coastal waterway. And so I assume there'll have to be a coastal area management plan submitted, but I haven't heard anything about that. I'm curious to know what that process is. And then one other thing is, well, I guess two really. I've been concentrating on the almost a thousand residential units proposed and thinking that's just way too much. And I still have that feeling, but there's also the existing buildings and the light urban, the light commercial or industrial, maybe a hotel, and other uses or theater, the swimming pool that are there too. And it might be useful to think about those uses and the residential uses separately and then put them back together because it makes it even a larger project in just quoting the, the rather large number of a thousand new residential units. And along with those a thousand new residential units, I went over in East Lime near Costco and up the hill there and looked at that. That's a large new project. The Gateway Commons is put together in three phases. There's an initial phase and more of a luxury phase, and the anchor is the Costco that they built. But that's nowhere near as large as what's proposed for the Mystic Education Center. And, and there, the, it's not as rural as what we have here. And, and actually, I just, I, I think I'll wrap up there and just say thank you for your service at town, and thank you for, for being so good about listening to us and our concerns.
All right, thank you. I do not see any other hands.
Okay. And we'll move on. Well, I wonder, Deb, on all these comments that we received on M E C, should we come up with maybe a simple flow chart of what should, what goes on with how we develop this? Maybe they can talk to you sometime in the next few days about it.
I think that's also something that was suggested as well. Yeah, I think Michael Kain had also suggested that, so we can, we can do that.
Answer a lot of questions that people have. All right. Okay, next we have site plans, S I T.
Didn't sound.
All right.
Nearly as confused as I did. Jeff didn't sound nearly as confused as I did. Thank you, Jeff. May I also, I just want to thank the chairman for allowing people to speak their piece. I, I really, the, the public speaking, the public hearings are the thing that I enjoy about these meetings the most. And I think it's vital that we allow people to, to speak as long as they like. And sometimes the stories are a little off the mark or, or go off in different directions, but I, I for one enjoy them. There you go. Thank you.
We don't use a timer. Okay, site plans. We have S I T twenty dash oh one Groton Consolidated Middle School sign on eighty-five Fort Hill Road continuation.
Yeah, let me just get these folks into the meeting here.
Let's see, Rick Norris's name, let's see.
And let's see.
Hi, this is Amy.
Hey, Amy, is there anybody else with you aside from Rick?
No, not today.
Okay. Rick, you can unmute if you need to.
Amy, you going to make the presentation?
Your computer, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. It's nice to come speak with you again. We did some significant work, took many of your suggestions, looked at them. Amy's put paper to pencil, and her team is, is worked hard on those. Just to be a brief overview, I know Hal was concerned with the state. And the state sign there, we did receive an email from them, which, I apologize, should have been part of the package as well as sent off earlier. I could read it into the record of people's desire. But it basically says, after numerous discussions that we've had, and they're not all cited in this email, but they denied our ability to put letter, additional letters on their sign. Neither that nor use their electronic version at all because of their security, IT security issues. So I could provide this letter for the record. If you desire me to read it, it's an email. I could read it also.
I think that's in our package.
We saw it.
Is it in the package?
Yes, it's part of the packet.
Yeah, I didn't see it when I briefly went through it. Also, we, we looked at this, spent a lot of time looking at the design of the sign. And Amy will go into a lot more detail- And Amy will go into a lot more detail on this, but we looked at the design, the location, the, the size of the display, if you will, which has really been decreased to, to actually meet the regulations. So, so variance may not even be required for that particular part of the sign, even though we have it. We've done a couple of renditions that she'll show you. We tried to coordinate it with the Grasso Tech sign. So, and Amy will show you a couple of examples of doing that. And of course, we looked at some trees and, and the Parks Department wanted us to reinstate their planter, if you will. It was in front of the Sutton Park sign. So that'll show up on the plans also. So I'll turn it over to Amy and let her go into more detail on these things. And I'd be happy to answer any questions along the way. So Amy, please proceed.
Okay, thanks, Rick. I'm not sure, Diane, if you'd like me to share my screen or if the commit, commission is just going to refer to their packet.
Why don't you share the screen? Because I don't have the ability tonight to share. I'm sorry.
No problem. I, I'm looking for where I can do that. I think Deb's working on it for me, looks like.
Promoter as a panel.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. There we go.
Ah, there we go. I have a totally different view. Okay. So. Okay, I think you can see my whole screen, which isn't great, it's because it's not so neat, but I'd like to run through some of the changes since we last met. You might recall that our, my colleague Jason from Malone and McBroom had presented the location of the sign and his assessment of the corner that we're putting it on and how it should be equidistant from the curb on this side as the sign is on the other in both directions. So we have accomplished that as we had in the first iteration. In this scheme, we have also added a sight line, 390 foot sight line for a 35 mile an hour zone, indicating that there's no obstruction in either direction. But in particular, for someone pulling out in regards to looking left, our sign is not in the way. So with that, we've added two maple trees along the existing tree line. They, they match the the native trees that are along that area. And, and that's in order to sort of make up for the fact that one tree will be removed in order to put the sign in the appropriate location. As you can see here, plantings around the sign and, and the trees are called out and then listed in the plant schedule on that same sheet. So you can see that the shrubs and the ground covers are actually matching to those that are on the Elagroso sign. This plan also has been updated to, to show that the Sutton Park sign has been already relocated from this location where it was. And we're now putting a tree over to the location along the existing sidewalk leading to Sutton Park. And you can see that we're also indicating that the concrete masonry units that were previously located around the sign will be relocated and become a planter at that same, in the same manner for that sign. So that's the extent of the changes on the site plan. And if you don't mind, I'll move forward to the sign itself. And I think best to show it in a rendering. So this is giving you a flavor of what the sign is going to look like. We modified the base of the sign to be cast stone, which will match the tone and texture of the base of the Elagroso sign. So we feel that that's an improvement to unifying this corner. And the metal panel that's around the upper portion of the sign surrounding the digital, digital display is a darker tone than what you had seen in the previous rendition. The words for Grotton Middle School have been moved up to this elongated taller area of metal panel because the display, the digital display has been modified to be shorter. And then that gives more prominence, we felt, to the, the words Grotton Middle School. As someone on this commission had pointed out, the words Grotton Middle School on the base would have, or could have had the possibility of becoming covered by the plantings or just weren't as prominent if they were below the digital sign. So we feel like this is a nice improvement and, and thank you for your suggestion on that. So the Grotton Middle School is going to be the most prominent of that. And then the digital display signage has been reduced in size as Rick described. So I added to the packets, are all renderings that you had seen in the previous meeting. And you have in your packet. But we did add these. Because there's a brick wall behind the Elagroso sign, we felt that we would provide you an option that shows the base of the Grotton Middle School sign could be either the cast stone that we were selecting at first, which is this material that you see on the actual Grotton Middle School building. These are two pictures of the same area. Or it could be the brick base. That brick also shows up on the Grotton Middle School. But it, it also reflects the brick wall that's behind the Elagroso sign. So sort of at, at your preference, we'd be able to change out the base material to match the wall behind the sign. If you didn't like the fact that it's right now reflecting, matching the base of the Elagroso sign itself. So those are options one and two, and the materials that they have, here's a clean version of those options. And with that, I mean, unless you're like me, I can certainly walk through the detailed drawings and review those. But I think that this was a synopsis of the changes that we've made.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
Staff, if they have, does staff have any input on the supplemental?
No, we don't have any input. We, we had asked for a couple of options for you to review and they have reduced the size of the, the area of the display. So it now meets the zoning regulations without a variance.
That's good. So I'll open it up to commissioners if they have any concerns. We'll start with you, Mike.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Rick. Thank you.
Amy.
Amy. It's much better, I believe. Good job. I would, the questions that I have, is there going to be lighting for this at night? And how would that work?
No, there's no external lights applied to the sign.
Okay, that's fine.
Any, any light would be a spillover.
I don't.
Relatively modest from the, from the display.
Okay, I, I still don't like flashy signs, but that's neither here nor there. The, between the brick or the cast. I, I would, I mean, it's just preference, right? So I would pick the brick, but I think the cast probably goes with the other sign. Oh, and Amy, I would say that ours does theirs. The other sign on the other side, ours look better, so.
Thank you. Ours is far more modest.
I think it really does show, you know, how careful everyone was with this. Does the tree that's there that you depicted in the picture, is there's just an outline of it? Is that the existing tree or is that a?
That's correct. That's the existing tree. Yes. The, the one that's depicted dash is the one that would be removed. Yeah, that will be removed. And you can see.
Anyway, that it could be saved. That is such a beautiful tree. It's like a 16 inch diameter, 18 inch diameter. The limbs don't start until 10 feet. I'm just, is there a way that it could be saved? And maybe even if it, like, cut down at a later date, if we absolutely had to, I just hate cutting down. I mean, that tree is perfectly shaped.
Right. No, I, I mean.
Beautiful to me.
In the, in a perfect world, I would.
I wish.
Yeah, in a, yeah, in a perfect world, I would never recommend taking down a specimen tree. But as Jason, Jason had described, that tree will put this sign in shadow all of the time. And it, at one point in time, there was probably a matching tree on the other side of the road that obviously was taken down for the Grasso sign. And they have this large, clear area around their sign, which is what makes their sign so prominent. And so what Jason was trying to do, we will not be duplicating the size of the Elagroso sign is to make sure that the Grotton Middle School sign had the same presence and weight on this, on the corner as the.
And if I am, am I adding, the, the tree is in such a location that almost regardless of where we put that sign near it, the excavation will potentially damage the root system to that tree. That's, that's another consideration we had with some of the other trees we have on, on the school projects, actually. So to avoid that, you know, we did add two trees back behind, I mean, so.
It's gonna be 30 years before they're as big as that one that's there. It's gorgeous.
Well, I asked for a larger caliper. We may even need to go bigger than what, what we show on the plan. But we, we can do that.
Just seems a shame.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
That's it. Is there any consideration if the school were to get a name other than Grotton Middle School, how that would be added?
Well, they're pinned letters. They could be removed and always replaced.
All right, that would be reasonable, I suppose.
Yeah, it's, it's about as reasonable as you can get. You know, we have, we're struggling with, and you'll see at some future time, instead of what used to be Cutler is now Mystic River Magnet School. So it's an extremely long name. So at some point in the future, you'll be seeing that sign. But yeah, there, there are possibilities to make those changes and they are attached to metal panels at the top.
Okay, so that's good then. All right, that's, those are my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And if anyone else wants to weigh in on the tree, go right ahead, please. Thanks.
Now, you have any questions, concerns?
Yeah. You know, I do. We start with the tree and I, I think in this particular situation, I, I can't stand cutting down trees. And in this case, I'd say it just have to get rid of the tree. I, I understand that. We, the Grasso Tech sign did whatever damage it did by being this enormous thing.
Right.
And clear cutting the area around it. And if we're going to do anything that looks like the entrance to our school campus, it needs to match on the other side. So yes, just please get a, this larger caliper tree to replace, place it as you can. But since there is a considerable sand of other very large trees around it, everybody who's attending this meeting will really miss it for a while. And I think everyone else will just forget that it was there. So in reality, I, I hate to say it, but getting, letting the sunshine through there is, is probably more important, I'm afraid to say. And getting a few cords of lumber out of it. With regard to the sign itself, I personally have still not got to be happy with having a sign there because we're back to dueling signs, especially on, on this one, as, as opposed to some previous ones. Amy did a good job of these illustrations where you absolutely see them both. And one direction actually didn't, it does seem better looking northbound. Is that because the Grotton Middle School sign is so much smaller than the, the Grasso sign? It looks like they're side by side at first glance. And very, very different, which still bothers the heck out of me. So I'm all for the concrete base or whatever, the, the stone base, whatever that is, but to, to make it match as best as possible. It absolutely must do that. I even took as far as to say that the metal panel, I understand philosophically how nice it is to make it match the building that's up the hill. But I think it needs to match the sign. I was already had a problem with the sign, the, the Grasso sign when it went in. And one of my comments then was, okay, so this is going to be our standard school sign now. And then it wasn't apparently. I don't know how that happened. I'm still, still having a problem with, if we're going to have a standard sign, then we shouldn't just keep coming up with different signs for different buildings. It just makes things look cluttered. So if anything, it still looks quite different. I understand that there's no way you can just make a miniature Grasso tech sign, then that screen would be too small and the grass was so enormous on it. It's, the word grass is sticking out and it's, that one's, those letters are lit, aren't they?
Yes, their, their letters are backlighting, if you will.
How much, and we're certainly not going to duplicate that. I wish Grasso hadn't done it.
Right.
But we need to do something that looks like we tried. So I'd say the background color of the panel should, for good or ill, match the Grasso background color. So it looks like we did, in architect speak, use the same language and the same vocabulary for the sign. The, 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 the font for the letters should be similar. Well, everything else should kind of come across similarly as if it was done by the same people at the same time for the same entrance of the same campus. So then when we go to other schools, then whatever that is, then let's make this Grotton Middle School the way the signs look the next time we redo a sign. And not just keep reinventing this.
Well, and to your point, Hal, what we're looking at, and we're waiting for a potential approval on this sign before we completed designs of the other two school signs. So for our town signs, they would be similar, if not duplicate kind of things. I mean, that doesn't help this particular situation, but it is something we have in mind that, that our schools have a, a particular look, if you will, as far as signage goes.
Right. And it's, I'm saying this situation, it's not terrible if we just take, take, take the vocabulary that Grasso tech is put onto their sign and kind of back down a bit, maybe where it says the smaller white lettering is extremely visible on that dark background and it shows up very well. It's too small to be able to see anything because the word grass is so enormous.
Right.
But maybe that's, that's a way of making it all kind of connect together using that same raised lettering on it. On the same metal. And you can follow up with that. It won't have anything to do with, necessarily much to do with the school up on top of the hill. But neither can you see the school up on the top of the hill, even, even slightly down here right now. All this is, is the gateway to the campus. So I kind of vote for that. And I still haven't, part two, Rick, was we were going to talk about, and what about a unified sign? And is there any advance on that before we just say, okay, on this?
No, no, there's not. And that was the email that the state sent us and that's all it would send us. So that email is in the package I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm sorry.
There was some discussion early on about various options that could be done or where letters could be placed on the Grasso tech sign. They would not allow us at all into their software, whatever system to use the digital portion of it. And this most recent email doesn't even like us to put letters on their sign. So we've run into a dead end on that, if you will. And, and it's not for lack of trying. I mean, the, the email that you'll see, see in your package was actually sent to Brian Oblon, who's our owner's rep from Arcadis. And he's the project manager, project executive for all, all three of our projects. And he's the project manager, project executive for all, all three of our projects. So it, it wasn't at, at the lowest level, if you will, it was going to the state and asking these questions. And he has worked with the state on, uh, the Grasso Tech project and other projects with the state. So he does have some, uh, I won't call it influence because I'm not sure anybody has influence with the state, but he at least knows who to talk to, if you will.
He has a relationship with them. Yeah.
Yes, he does. Yeah.
Um, I suppose this is a lesson, a bad lesson learned. Because, as we say, even, I don't know if you notice in music, when you make a mistake, you make more, you make, you keep making that mistake because then it sounds like it's musical. In this case, if we have a, a sign that we're not crazy about and we approved it. And, uh, and now we, we kind of should live with it. It's not horrible. The, the, the language of it is, the vocabulary isn't, is, is fine. But I think we should stick with that and, and modify that exact language. So ordinarily, I'd say the idea of how you formulated this revised sign uh, definitely doesn't match, but I think what you've got there is, is pretty good. It does look.
Okay, thank you.
This, the words are prominent, the sign is secondary to the name of the school.
Right.
And it sits on a base, so I think this might be the best you can do.
Yeah, and, and, and that was the goal to make it a school sign with the ability to have, uh, some, uh, content, if you will.
Yeah.
As opposed to the previous one you saw, which looked like a big display board with the, the name of the school is a second thought almost.
I, I completely, completely agree. We're still gonna have dueling electric signs here too, which is something that well, we never repeat. And we have no choice now because the fact that's into it, as you say.
And, and we don't have a flasher like across the way, so.
Yeah. Alright, that's all I've got. Oh, by the way, so the one thing, so the Grasso sign is backlit, the word, just the word Grasso, right? Is that right?
Yes, partially.
Uh, but this won't have any light on it except for.
No, no.
Residual. The nearest street light is where?
There's one, there's one at the intersection.
There's a, there's a street light at the intersection and then there are also, um, lower driveway lights along that driveway.
Okay, so maybe there might be.
Um, so you can see that there's a driveway light here and as I zoom in over here, shoot, not this, uh, sorry. Right here. There's a street light just across from, on the telephone pole directly across from our.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
Oh, alright, maybe that's okay.
Mm-hmm. There's a, there's a good amount of light spill in this area.
Alright. That's all I've got.
Well, probably enough, uh, light given off by the Grasso sign that rotten middle one doesn't need.
Sorry. No tree.
Um, I, I, this is some, a much better design, I think. I, I, I really appreciate it. I'm tending to want the brick, uh, base rather than the plain base. It may be just because it does differentiate it a little bit, uh, from, from Grasso. I think it's nicer. I think it's, uh, more, I won't say appropriate for Groton. I'm not too sure what that means, but, um.
Uh, and if you go back to that previous slide, Amy, the previous rendering that you showed, the brick color was, yeah, that brick color was the, the intent was to match that color if we did go with a brick.
Yeah, that, that's right. I think, I, I, I like that. I like the way that brick.
I didn't even see.
Uh, goes into that.
See that?
I think it's more appropriate. It's less industrial.
Look, yes.
Can you sneak in there at night and put it on the Grasso sign?
Yeah, we could, we could try. We could get somebody.
I won't tell.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm happy with it.
Okay, thank you.
So, do you have any? Any questions or comments?
Um, I think the only co- a couple of comments, um, I do like the brick a lot better. It gives a nice look. Um, I think it's nicely balanced now. And I guess, um, I would, uh, for the tree, I'm not any, um, arborist or anything, but if there's any possibility of limiting it up a bit to, um, you know, get more space under there, create a lighter look. Uh, to me, that'd be a lot more preferable than cutting it down and putting in a, a maple, for example. It's gonna be a lot smaller, so. But that's, that's my opinion. That's all I have. I think, I thank everybody for all the work you've done on this. It was a big job.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Um, just probably three quick things. Number one, I do like the brick. Um, number two, um, thanking just Amy and Rick because you took our input and I think you did a really good job on it. And number three, having done a lot of product qualification, product release, never, never follow failure and you chose not to do that. So any comparisons to the sign across the small street here is you did a better job and that's what we're here for. That's it, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Good point, Kevin. Thank you.
No, I agree that, that no, no design looks much better than, than the state sign. I would have gone with, uh, with the, uh, concrete bottom without the brick, but I don't really care. But I do think it looks a lot better. It's a more modern, contemporary sign where the other one looks sort of.
Junkie.
Crash junkie, uh, looks too much like cheap commercial. Railroad salvage. Does anyone have any other comments, uh, for Rick?
I, I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna, uh, since we're doing this, uh, brick. If that's okay.
We're doing brick, right?
Brick.
That's what the majority was.
And I agree with Sue. If we can, if we can do anything to save that tree, I would be willing to do it. I'll defer to others.
Good.
Thank you.
Because really we're here just to approve the site. Alright, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve a site plan, S I T twenty-one oh one, and option two for the Groton Middle School sign, one eighty-five Fort Hill Road with the following modification. One, any staff technical items shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second. Yeah, we kept whoever.
Let's move to the second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the, the motion for the new sign. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have had, piped up when there's a discussion. So right now, we're just going with what this looks like. I mean, I've just, I'm still not in favor of the brick because one's brick and one's concrete now, so. I love what the bricks looks and I love that it'll match the back wall. And now I've got two different signs, so I, that's what I don't like about it.
No more discussion, Hal.
I mean, so I, so it's, it's one of those things. So I'm glad to vote against it, but alright.
You're voting against it?
If, if that's, or I have to be honest to.
Well, it has.
We're in the middle of a vote. No more discussion.
Voting on motion with option two. So you're voting against it, Hal?
I'm sorry, I will vote against it.
Alright. Any abstentions? So a motion is carried for in favor, one opposed.
Okay, thank, thank you all. We appreciate the, the time you spent with us and, uh, your, certainly your suggestions along the way.
Yes, thank you.
Got a much better sign.
Thank you.
Are you gonna use this design now for the other schools?
Yep.
Standard, you put this as a standard architectural feature of.
Right.
Okay.
Alright.
Of course, of a different color.
Okay, moving on to, uh, no old business, new business. We have any new applications? I guess we have, uh, twenty-one oh four Stuville and twenty-one oh five, three Water Street Plan modification. They're changing already.
Those are the only two.
What are they doing on three Water Street?
Um, they want to modify the first floor from retail to restaurant.
Oh, just one restaurant?
Oh, two.
Oh, oh, so it'd be a combination. That requires a site plan change.
That's a change in parking. And there may be some other issues, um, and with the Health Department and Public Works.
Oh, yeah.
Weren't there a lot of issues that we had with doors swinging and, and, uh, entrances and, and handicap and all that kind of stuff? So will we be looking at that again?
In terms of how it impacts the restaurants, yes, you will.
Yeah, the restaurants.
And would we look at those things again if there was another change of use?
It depends whether it needed a site plan, whether it rose to the level of needing a site plan.
And that would be a parking issue then?
Uh, or more residential units.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item is Z B A referral for six Casino Road, Little Gold Marine Incorporated.
Yeah, um, Greg Fettis, who is the engineer on the project, um, is here to run through all the variances for you. I'm gonna promote him to a panelist so that he can share his screen. Greg.
My up?
There you are.
Good, good evening. Um, there's also, uh, Andrew Giblin and Brian Burdick. I don't know if you see them, Deb. Maybe they can join us.
I'm gonna allow them to talk. Absolutely, um.
Okay.
And, well.
Uh, Brian is, Andy, is Brian on too?
I believe he is. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can. I don't see him in the, in the list.
Okay, I'll, I'll send him a text, but, but you should start.
Okay, alright, if he shows up, I'll see him.
You see the phone number, Deb?
I don't see a phone number anymore.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, well, if he shows up, I'll allow him to talk.
Okay, uh, good evening. My name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, representing, uh, Little Gold Marine, which, uh, is developing the property at zero and six Casino Road. Can I share my screen, Deb?
You should be able to.
Okay. Right, let me. Okay, the little, Little Gold Marine is developing, um, the site on Casino Road, which is just, uh, prior to the last development, Harbor View Landing, I believe it's called. But it was, it's currently vacant and had a residential, uh, use on it as well as a, um, let me just get to the, there's a lot of kind of drawings here, so I'm gonna just kind of flip around real, as quickly as I can. Can everyone see the survey?
Yep.
Okay. So this is what, uh, was there. The house and the garage were previously, um, removed, uh, as, as you can see, Casino Road kind of, goes right between the two properties, six being to the south and kind of zero Casino Road to the, uh, north, and then the railroad tracks further to the north. And then Harbor, uh, Harbor Landing is, is, is at the end here to the east, to the northeast. But you can kind of see what was here before. There was a, uh, kind of an old rail, uh, access point here, uh, located, um, in kind of the southeast corner of the property, uh, and then a dock and pilings and so forth. And then a kind of a hardscape along a combination of walls and, and riprap, um, along, along the shoreline. So the proposal, I mean, I'm just gonna get back to the other one. Is the, the site plans up now? Yes, okay. So the proposal is to build three buildings, um, kind of redo the docks, uh, redo the access point to the water here, create a covered workslip, a boat shop and a storage shed. And then, uh, kind of parking and, uh, boat storage across the street on Casino Road. Um, with some associated, uh, landscape buffer, perimeter buffer around the entire property. Um, what my client is trying to do is, is basically recreate a nineteen twenty-ish, uh, wood boatyard facility, um, that specializes in the renovation of wood boats. So, I'm just gonna go through. So in, in order to do that, we need, um, several variants. And, uh, I'm gonna go through each of the variances, but just wanted to spend just a couple more minutes and show you just a couple of, uh, renderings, what this, what this is gonna look like. Um, and I'm just gonna go through. Yeah. Is that, that's the elevations of the proposed building is up now? Yes, okay. So, these buildings, the three buildings are gonna be a, basically a restoration, like what would, would have been there a hundred years ago. Um, all very detailed, um, uh, and, and, uh, you know, there's, there's three buildings. So the Casino Road elevation, uh, you could see the, the boat shop, um, the covered workslip of, and then, let me just get. Yeah. And then the storage building. So the, this, this would be facing, um, Casino Road. And I'm gonna bring up some renderings. Yeah. So that's kind of what it's gonna. Yeah, maybe you don't see that. So this is what it's gonna look like, uh, from across the street, across the railroad tracks. So on the left here, you have a storage building, uh, a covered, a covered workslip in the middle and then a boat, a repair building. And then you can see the docks, uh, and so forth in the Mystic Harbor. Um, and then the, the kind of the perimeter landscaping and then the empty, uh, basically the empty lot for parking as well as boat storage across the street and maneuverability. These, all these buildings are relatively close to the street. Uh, there's a front yard averaging, regulation that allows us to put them similar distances to the other, uh, buildings on the street. So in doing that, there's 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 it's a relatively small facility. But we've we've also got a decision from the zoning enforcement officer that they they will be kind of work together as as one lot. So the variances we're asking for, and I'm going to go through them one by one, but a lot of it has to do with kind of working the the entire site, um you know, both sides of it uh with maneuverability and getting to two doors, uh getting into the to the uh the workshop, getting into the storage area. You can see the doors that open in in all in basically all three buildings. So I'm just going to bring up, there's a uh and I think it's important. We developed this exhibit to kind of illustrate the 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 type of boats and the trailers that are going to have to get gain access to the storage shed as well as to the waterfront, uh the covered work slip and the uh and the boat shop. So you can see um and I and this is not a everyday occurrence. The boat, the projects are typically long-term projects, you know, I don't know if anyone's had experience with working on wood boats. But it could be, you know, probably the shortest term is six months, but uh they could last a year, two years, uh so a you're not going to see maneuverability every every day. It's going to be very infrequent. Uh, but it the areas kind of have to be open in order to 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 get access to all the buildings.
Greg, so why don't you go through the variances now, just so um and and you can do it more general, I think, with the landscaping and the parking sort of all lumped into one um. If you want.
Yep. So let me just I'll go through in order of how they're listed on the public notice.
Okay.
So there's several landscaping uh sections that we're looking for variances for uh interior landscape and parking requirements removes. And that's basically in front of, so we have very limited parking in front of our bil- building or on the side of a building, and that's located uh right here. Which is adjacent to the covered work slip. So there's four or five spaces there, so your regulations ask for kind of a five-foot landscape and then a six-foot sidewalk uh against the building. And we really just don't have the 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 room and it and one, it's not a kind of appropriate to have a raised concrete sidewalk. Uh, in this instance, uh one, we're trying to replicate the nineteen twenty-ish facility, so they just didn't have them back then. But if we push that back out. I go to the site plan here real quick. If we do push these parking spaces out further, it's going to further block uh access to the covered work slip. Uh, because we would need to be about eleven feet off the building there. There's some interior uh island requirements. Which again, this is not a traditional parking lot layout. We 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 kind of put the parking required towards the perimeter of the uh of the lot, across the street. We needed to keep this area open for truck loading and as well as uh kind of pulling in and getting into the boat shop. So it's not, it's not your traditional where islands might make sense, uh where you have back-to-back parking or you have long strings of uh long strings of parking. So we have four spaces here, six spaces here, uh four on six casino. So we're looking for for uh, you know, several, I think there's four different variances for the uh for the landscaping for the that are associated with the parking. What we are doing is providing basically a street trees or or along the perimeter, all the way around the perimeter, three sides, with the exception of the water side. And adding a an additional couple uh street trees on the corner here uh as well as all four corners. The so this, so we're asking for uh the sidewalk and uh curb requirements. Uh, we're not looking to put any sidewalks along Casino Road uh as well as in front of this building here. The next section is to the the driveway requirements, I mean we're basically a fully uh full curb cut on either side. Because of the previous drawing I showed you with with the truck turning radiuses and so forth. It's not going to make sense, um given the kind of uniqueness of this property to have one curb cut on this side and one curb cut on the other side. We also are looking blow this up real quick here. So inside the the boat shop, there's an apartment. Uh, we're retaining the original residential use here. Uh, we just have moved it into this building uh because we're and the and the regulations are a little bit gray here. Uh, we asked for a variance uh to reduce the rear yard setback to thirteen point nine where thirty feet is required for residential for non-water dependent use. The entire building is water dependent, but inside that building is an apartment. So we are looking to uh for that rear yard variance. We also asked for the residential use, although we have a letter from the zoning enforcement officer stating that the the residential use is still valid. We never intended to get rid of that. So we we kind of just asked for that just in case. But we think that the residential use is is allowed. So we also have section six point one three to allow residential use within the coastal resource setback, and we have that line on here. It's basically from Title Wetlands as well as from the Mystic River, so it it runs that entire building. The boat shop is in the fifty-foot residential or fifty-foot coastal resource setback. And then it kind of comes across uh through the covered work slip and then across the uh front of the storage shed here. So that entire building is in the coastal resource setback. We do have a residential use in there, so that's uh six point one dash three is what we're asking for there. And I think that is it. So I just want to say like we're, although it seems like a lot of variances because it's a water dependent use, the buil- the buildings really would not, nothing's really going to change. We would just have additional landscaping and a sidewalk if we didn't ask for any variances, which would be a a hardship for this use to to try to meet your requirements specifically, but you know, we're kind of open to to hearing what the commission has to say regarding this.
All right. Does uh staff have any uh input on this? So that'll.
Um. It's 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 a water dependent use in a in the WDD district. It's it's a unique use. Um, when we were looking at the zoning regulations and we were revising a lot of the landscaping and other requirements and site and sidewalks and all of that, we really weren't thinking about, you know, this type of use in this district. Uh, looking back at the plan of conservation and development recently to see what things we were we had done and we were still needed to work on, that was one of the um recommendations was to look at our WWDD WW district and look at the design standards and they see if we can make them more appropriate. So basically, you you see what happens when somebody comes in, tries to put what's it allowed use in that district? They come up against all of these requirements that they really can't meet for the type of use that they're proposing. So I guess that's what staff would say in this case.
Does anyone on the commission have any concerns with the uh request of the ZBA? Or should we have no comment? I think it's good to see actually a waterfront use on a waterfront.
Right.
May I just ask one question? Uh, this is for um wooden boats. If the use were to change, what, how would that affect this? And I'm just talking, because like, for instance, the marine uh storage facility that we just uh dealt with over on uh Flanders Road, so if there was something where there was more same operation, different kind of boat, more a lot more activity, crossing the street a lot kind of thing. Would that, would that, would anything, would, I mean, would that still be acceptable?
Well, the only thing that is street feeds is that little place down the street where they have the you know, guest houses and stuff. There's nothing else on the street.
When it comes with the site plan, you'll have to deal with some of those issues, um hazardous materials now and and potentially in the future, things like that, if you're concerned about those issues. So under the site plan and the coastal site plan application, you'll be reviewing. You'll have to deal with that situation. Um, as far as increasing the level of activity. Potentially, they might have to come back if they were going to add anything or um.
I think I'm thinking more like where the road is blocked or people are trying to, you know, maneuver trailers in and and it it's a different use than what we're approving today. That's all. I'm I'm not, you know, it uh seems uh, there you go.
There's the old casino. I think you can only look at.
No, I don't have any other comments to that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
You want to put the casino back?
Not enough parking.
Supposedly that's a big, big thing and that's not the casinos I want on the right, not the first building. Isn't it? Isn't the casino the building on the the very right side?
This one here?
Yeah.
Well, I think, and I Andy can speak more about this, but the casino is a certain definition that.
No, it was a dance place.
Yeah.
That's what the casinos were.
Right.
Supposedly people came from Mystic annoying by boat to the place.
By train they came to.
Rally car.
Drive.
Train.
But I think maybe this this picture here, um Commissioner Kane, um this is the Mystic Shipyard in the thirties. This is the site we're looking at now, little uh so it's really small compared to it might alleviate some of the concerns of a change of use where even if it changed uses, it it's it's small, very small.
Yeah.
I think my only concern would be how to maintain the road, which is now actually more like a driveway to the one business. But if it's full-size curb cuts, the devil will be in the details, which I guess we'll get to rule on, but if that's a hundred percent paved, then there is no road. You're just driving through the lot.
Yeah, well, basically the road is uh is ultimately going to be as wide as the right of way, which is and we're going to run uh a concrete precast curb down both sides, which would basically I want to say hold it all together, but you're not going to have edges that it needs to be, it's it's going to be well-built. It's actually going to be a better road than than what's there now and wider, so.
Are you saying you'll have a flush curb? But that is that what you're talking about?
Be flush, yeah, a flush concrete curb all basically the entire length on both sides. And that'll transition to a a crushed pervious parking on both sides. It might be some sort of shells. We're not sure yet of the finish, but it'll be a a very well-drained pervious uh parking area on both sides. And that kind of precast concrete curbing on both sides of Casino Road will basically hold that entire road. It it's going to be, it's going to be a a good look and a strong, basically new road.
Well, we'll we'll see a site plan for this.
Yes.
So all we're really talking about is just wavering the.
Or just um your comments on the variances.
Yes, just really on uh landscaping and parking requirements. That's all we're looking at.
Parking and the um setbacks to the coastal resource um for the residential use.
So the, does anyone have any concerns to address to the ZBA?
I I have no uh comments on on any of those things. Uh, maybe the plantings might be uh doubled up or increased if that's a possibility, if that's if if others feel that that would be beneficial.
Well, that won't that come up with the site plan? Because I I agree too.
Best talks interior landscape. Is what they're really.
Yeah, I would say that maybe, you know, to sort of isolate this place a little bit from uh and and offer whatever additional shade that the trees can provide.
Yeah. I think you'd have to look at the topography too, because it's sort of swampy down some of that area.
Yeah, well, maybe some willows.
Yeah, no, I meant it's not, it's not your normal type place.
Um, Chairman or Chairperson? So so my thoughts is that the variance, the variances seem small in relation to, you know, somewhat what I've read as far as the type of visions we're trying to create along the waterfront, which I, you know, to me, it looks like it's a tremendous amount of work's been done. So to me, the variances um are minimal. That's all, Chair.
Well, I think that's a good point. So we'll leave it as no comment then.
That's what I would say, yes.
Yeah.
No one has any objections, all right. You want to uh commission reports?
Thank you.
Huh? Have any, anything, uh, report a commission? Do any of the commissioners have anything to report? On? Report as staff?
Um, I'm sorry, Jeff, I thought you were going around. I've been very quiet about light and about illegal signs for the past year because of the whole you know, situation and people making money and maybe not having the ability to take care of their properties. But I'm getting a little concerned uh it maybe we ought to start looking at that again. I don't know what the zoning enforcement officer has been up to these days. I'm sure he's quite busy, but there are several sites in town that uh I think need some attention. There are several sites in town that, uh, I think needs some attention. And I will be bringing these forward in the future.
One thing I know is, um. Our director has been, has been talking about blight and talking, I think, with the town council on it. So there might be some additional things that will happen in the future with the blight ordinance and looking at that. So, um. So I know that's in the works.
Well, yeah, there, there are some sites I have in mind that. I'm sure that twenty other people have already complained about them, right? Nothing's happening.
Okay.
Make a list, Barbara, and we can compare them.
Could, could we get a re- report on how the, what kind of, uh. Work the, like, enforcement has. Has seen or done in the last month.
From the zoning official? I mean, the zoning enforcement person, okay.
Yeah, cuz we, haven't we gotten reports before?
Yes.
So maybe we, it would be a good time to get a, an update. Recent, recent history. Do you have any other things to report on, Diane? I assume you're it now.
The only, the only other thing is we've hired a new Cara. Her name is, her, her name is Deb. So now we have three.
Three Deb's.
Shop, shop field, shopbell. I, I don't know. Bruce, what's her last name? Shopfield?
Uh, I'm sorry. Shuffler?
Shuffler. And she'll be actually doing the, um, minutes for the PZC, so.
Okay.
You've referred, you've told her that we'll have to adjust her name, right? It's gotta become Debbie or Deborah or something.
Deb three, can't she have?
Reminds me of when I was town clerk, I had a Joan, a Jean, and a June.
Well, on the, on the zoning commission, there were how many Sue's? Oh, it's, it's. It was four, three or four, you got it.
Any, anything else, Diane?
So she would be taking over Cara's responsibilities?
Yes.
And, uh, as I asked a few meetings back, just, I mean, not to, but just to make sure that she keeps track of all of our sidewalks and. Everything else. I hate to lose those things.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
If no one has anything else, then I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? We have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Next regular meeting is March twenty-third.
You then.
We're.
We mean.
Special meeting coming up, right?
You have a special.
Meeting on Thursday.
Thursday.
Which somebody owes an agenda for.
You don't have the agenda for that yet?
No, Deb was mentioning it before, before the start of the meeting that she had, it's go, gotta get it out tomorrow, I hope.
Yes. What time does it start?
Six thirty, six thirty.
Can you remind me when that day is?
Thursday.
It's Thursday?
It's Thursday.
Yeah, it's, okay. All right, thanks. Hey, uh, is there an opportunity that I could pick that up, the CIP?
Uh, we have, Deb will call in.
Um, I can, I can find out for you tomorrow. Um, are you around tomorrow to pick it up?
I'm gonna be in Stonington tomorrow, so that would be convenient. I could drive by and pick it up. I just kinda, it's like one of those things that I like to have in paper and.
Yes.
No, you need it, yeah, cuz.
Does anybody else want it?
It's just a little easier.
Paging for it. PDF works fine.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna text Deb Galop right now, so I don't forget.
And maybe if she just texted me when it was ready.
Okay.
All right, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
In the notice of the meeting that, uh, she'd run him off or anybody.
Okay.
All right, that should be. Be it for tonight.
So at what point do we start meeting in person? I mean, we'll have to wait for, for Bruce to have his shots and that's gonna happen.
I got one.
I got two.
I just got the one, I got the second coming on Friday.
I got my booster today.
Hey.
At Foxwoods.
Foxwoods.
I have my tube. I kinda like sitting here and having like.
I, I think this is, works perfectly. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I like it.
Saves a lot of time driving around.
I think it's good, but I would say that there are times when it might be beneficial to have, uh, in-person, especially public hearings.
Oh, no, it's better to have.
I think big projects where there's a lot of plans and stuff, it's, you know.
The easier.
It works better.
It does.
I don't know. I like having my multiple screens here, so I'm always gonna be looking.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
It seems like the impact that a public hearing can have when there's people in the room is significant.
Right.
I think it's good for them. It's good for the public to see us there.
Well, that's, you know, and, and then we're, you know, humans, right? Not some face on a screen.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but it's also nice for people if they're in California, that they can attend a public hearing virtually, you know, it allows for flexibility and participation, so.
Well, I agree, Bruce, and I think too is that for me, it's been, uh, great because I can go back and reference old meetings. Whereas before, I, to tell you the truth, I would never come in and listen to tapes or infrequently, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it is a much better system to keep records. In fact, I would suggest that if we did do. Uh, go back to in-person meetings, it might be nice to have this, uh, ability to zoom in on them as well. Just have a camera set up in the room.
We are, we are looking at something like that where we would be able to do hybrid meetings.
Yeah, I think it would be really, uh, it have a much, much better, uh, process.
Right, attendance, the attendance just goes way up because it's, it's not a special trip. Everyone just sits in from the living room. It's great.
No, think of our carbon, uh, footprint has been, uh, reduced here.
Right.
We have forty, we have forty attendees tonight. I mean, how, how often do we ever have that in person?
No.
Yeah, on the last, last meeting, I was in Colorado, so.
See that?
Uh?
Right, yeah.
Imagine that.
Probably have more than forty because there's probably ten people sitting around Matty Carney's table.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
I think it's time.
Good night now.
Okay, have a good night, everyone.
You too.